I'd like to call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for September 2nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM. At this time, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's here. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalomothu.
Here.
And Trustee Tetter.
Here. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board and public announcements, board members and/or individuals in the audience may take a statement, make a statement containing information about a recent or upcoming event. This, again, would be nothing on the actual agenda for tonight. It's limited to five minutes. If you come up, just give your name and address, and I'll let you know when four minutes is up so you can kind of wrap it up. Do we have anyone in the audience? No? Okay. Do we have anybody online? No? Okay, I'll bring it to the board. Is anybody on the board? Trustee Morocco?
Just want to remind the public, September 20th is the gala for Preservation Clarkson to support the Construction Tech Program at Clarkson High School. It's at the Brady Lodge. You can go to preservationclarkston.com to get more information, and that's, again, September 20th.
Thank you. Good, good cause. Anybody else? Clerk?
I'd like to take a moment to recognize the passing of someone special to our community, former trustee Larry Russell, who passed away on August 22nd. Larry was a longtime resident of Independence Township and served on this board from 1996 to 2012. He was deeply dedicated to giving back to the community he loved, and his years of service left a lasting impact on our township. We're grateful for all that he did to make Independence Township a better place. Our thoughts and prayers are with his wife, Mary, along with other family and friends during this time.
Great. Okay. Any other announcements? No? The only one I would like to make is that, as a reminder, that September 8th at 5:00 PM here, there will be a workshop between trustees, the Board of Trustees, and the Planning Commission to discuss the open tree ordinance, and hopefully, everyone who's interested will be able to come. Okay. That's it. Then I'm going to close the public comments section. Sorry, Board and Public Announcements, let's go to public comments. Again, same thing, if you want to come up and make a public comment about anything other than what's on the agenda, please come up to the podium, give your name and address. Again, five minutes, the Board does not engage at this point. Anyone? No? Okay, anybody online? No? Okay. At this point in time, then, I'd like to close public comments. Public hearings, we don't have any. Presentation reports, we don't have any. Carryover, postponed agenda items, we don't have any. Next, we have consent agenda, to request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of August 19th, 2025. Number two, request to approve the audit, or sorry, the August 26th, 2025 check run-in, including ACH for $4,108,756.58, and ratify the August 15th, 2025 payroll for $397,797.70. Item number three, request to adopt resolution number 2025-028, which is the 2026 Board of Trustees' regular meeting schedule. And last, but item number four, request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol for Saturday, September 27th, 2025. All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We don't have anything to be removed from the consent agenda. That then brings us to the regular business. The first item for regular business is the request to approve the transitioning of the Township Employee Retirement Plan from Empowers to T-Roe Price. Tier to help explain that is going to be our benefits company, and Steve will go through the information.
Great, thank you.
Handouts, everybody?
So, I assume I'm standing here?
Yep.
All right.
Just give your name and.
Steve Matar with Corporate Benefit Solutions. We have been the benefit brokers and advisor on the retirement plans here at the township for, well, the benefit's probably going on four years, five years, I lose track of time, and on the retirement plans over the last couple of years. After the transition from the last election, we met with Supervisor File and brought him up to speed on a lot of different things, and one of those was the review of the 401K, which has been operating fairly smoothly since we took over. However, not to get too weedy, but there's a lot of history with the, I'm sorry, the 401A and the 457B plans. There has been a lot of history there that took place before we became the advisors, transitioning from various carriers as those carriers got bought out by other carriers. The township is currently with a company called Empower, which is doing a fine job with the plan. However, as we mentioned to Supervisor File back, gosh, the beginning of the year, I believe, that you were due for a request for proposal, so we went out to market to do that, which is customary, to be sure that your plan is well-priced and that the product is a good one for both the township and the employees. So, we did all that. We completed the RFP in April of this year, presented our findings to the supervisor, and then we had to put some pieces together with the prospective new custodians to be sure that everything was going to go smoothly for the participants and the employees here. So, in doing so, we looked at many companies that are able to handle a plan like yours, because not all companies can handle a plan like yours with a 457 and a 401A. So, you see those listed on the presentation there. There were a total of six different carriers, and then of those, we winnowed that down to a finalist, which was T-Roe Price, and T-Roe Price became that finalist for a variety of reasons. One is pricing, which is not the be-all, end-all, but their pricing was significantly lower, and their service model was a little bit more hands-on than what you have with Empower. Empower's a very large company, they do a very good job. T-Roe Price actually has local representation and could be of more service to the employees and the township. That in conjunction with the fact that the plan itself, should it move to T-Roe Price, would be almost identical to its current structure in terms of investments, and also have the, a better fixed rate of return on the fixed account. So, in the fixed account world, you have a fair amount of money in participants that are in the fixed rate of account, getting a flat rate of return. One of the dilemmas that you have on your current plan is that it is a legacy plan. Again, not to get weedy, but it was with a company called Mass Mutual, it's then moved over to Empower, which now is sitting there with these legacy costs, and Empower is not able to increase that fixed rate of return to keep pace with market. And so, those folks would get a nicer return. The mutual funds themselves are about 88% crossover with respect to what's in there. Both plans have what we call open architecture, which means there's probably about 8,000 mutual funds we can choose from. The funds in your current plan are excellent, and the vast majority of them would stay exactly the same. There's a few that don't exist or are limited to participation, but they have like-to-like funds. In other words, if it's a growth fund, it moves to a growth fund and so forth. Also, the majority of your money, like most retirement plans in the market space today, are invested, the participants are investing in target date funds, which is sort of the do-it-for-me approach of investing, where people say, hey, I want to invest to my retirement age, and someone manages that money for them to their retirement date. The retirement date funds with T-Roe Price are among the best in the industry. They are one of the highest-rated target date funds with Morningstar. Your current funds are also very good, but the ones with T-Roe Price are just a little bit better. So, in terms of overall experience of the employees, we think it would be very, very minimal, minimal disruption. There would be, of course, a period of time that you go through this transition that is, you know, it's not painless, but there is not a lot of work by the township at all. And so, the transition period would be fairly smooth. My company would help transition that, along with T-Roe Price, and we would have a number of employee meetings to help the employees understand what's going on and how their money's going to move from one carrier to the other. You also have a third-party administrator on your plan called Admin Partners. They're out of New Jersey. You say, why do we have somebody out of New Jersey? There are very few TPAs that can handle both a 457 plan and a 401A plan. We also shopped TPAs and Admin Partners. A is doing a great job historically, so we have no beef with them, but also their pricing is very good. So, in that vein, we said, well, that's probably the best road is to keep them. They know your plan, they know the history of your plan to a certain degree, and keeping them in place would be a good choice. And with that, I'll ask you any questions.
Just real quick, looking at the numbers, it seemed to make a lot of sense and looks good to me. I was just curious, is this, is this one of the items that would fall under collective bargaining, or is this really under the purview of the supervisor, just to provide the best and most cost-effective benefits package?
Yeah, this doesn't really come under the collective bargaining. I did meet with both unions, though, presidents and vice president, and explained what was going on, gave them the numbers that are in the packet here, and answered their questions. They didn't see a problem. At least, I haven't got anything back from their first round of questions.
As I mentioned in the agenda, the cost of the plan is 23 basis points lower with T-Roe Price, which accounts to $28,874 per year and growing, because as the assets grow, it's an asset-based charge. So, that $28,000 will be more next year and the year after, assuming the market continues to ebb forward. And that is participant money, right? So, that's $28,000 that's going to be going, keep staying in the participants' accounts as opposed to being paid out, as it currently is, to Empower. So, we thought that was also a very good selling point, if you will, or a point of maybe that the employees would enjoy knowing that they're going to be having a lower-cost plan.
And I think that's an excellent point, that the employees were paying this fee, not the township. So, they were paying to Empower.
Right.
But now, it stays in their account and gets that compounding effect.
Right. So, you know, at the end of the day, everybody has a little bit more money in their account, and this isn't going to make or break anybody's retirement, but certainly better in their accounts than being paid out to a custodian.
Right. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just for clarity, because this is not a field of mine, do they, so they don't have any say, really, in this? The employees don't?
Not necessarily, no, not really.
Okay, and we're not, no benefits are being affected or their investment?
No, there's no adversement at all to the employees in this change.
All right, thank you.
Clerk?
Is this going to have a one-to-one ratio with the current contract and the new? Is it going to be identical?
Yeah, the contracts will stay exactly the same.
Okay.
It's just, these are just, this is just the holding company, what we call the custodian, and the underlying investments, as you can see from the third page in your handout, the vast majority of them are identical, notwithstanding the target date funds, because target date funds are changing. But again, the target date funds, in our opinion, are better than the ones you have. And, and the other nice thing about the T-Roe Price target date funds is that, as most target date fund families are, they move in five-year increments, right? So, there's a 2025 fund, a 2030 fund, 35, et cetera. The current funds with BlackRock are 10-year increments, so it's less specific to an individual. You've got to be sort of the closest five years, or actually, you know, whatever. It's just not nearly as tight of a window to be in that target date with the BlackRock funds as they are with the T-Roe Price funds.
Not so much funds, I mean, the contract with retirement dates, years, things like that.
All that will stay exactly the same, yes.
The same, yeah.
Just because, all of that, and that's another great reason to keep the continuity with Admin Partners, because they'll have all of that in place. And so, when we move the actual contract, as it were, it's not, it's the agreement, the summary plan description to T-Roe Price, it'll all be exactly the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to think about it is, instead of going to Shell, we're going to go get our gas at Mobil now. You're still filling it into the same car.
Yeah.
Now, everything else you have.
Good analogy.
Treasurer Brown?
Just to make sure I understand clearly and have it right in my head, the employees still pick what they invest in, that doesn't change.
Yes, that is correct.
And these are the options they have. And the part you were talking about, where there's a 2025 fund, a 2030 fund, et cetera, that allows the employee to effectively pick at a more narrow range when they'll retire, which, in theory, would reduce their risk as they got closer to it, so they know the bucket they've got. It's not growing as fast, but it's also not going to shrink as they near retirement. And that's, is that the intention of that?
That's exactly right, although, anyone doesn't have to live with that framework.
They can do what they want.
They can choose to be more aggressive, but yes, that's exactly right, which we think is a better solution. And also, just to be clear, the assets that are currently with Empower will map, and this is the way most of the industry does this, they will map to the target date funds. Before that money comes over, all the participants, through our education and meetings, will have the opportunity to go online and decide where they want to put their money, anywhere they want. They can just, so when it comes over, it'll go right where they want it. It can be in the exact same funds they have, but it's their choice to do that or not. But they do nothing, and most folks, as I mentioned, do have their money in the target date fund. Their money will simply move to the target date fund. So, it's a cleaner, it's a cleaner move. It also helps insulate the township to some degree, because if someone, you know, wants to stay in the cash account, for example, and maybe they just don't understand investing very well, but from a fiduciary standpoint, you want to be able to say to someone who's maybe in their 20s or 30s, gee, maybe it wouldn't be the greatest thing to be in the cash account for the rest of your life. Maybe you should be in the market, because that's historically what would be better. Not that it is or it isn't, but historically speaking. So, to insulate you, everybody moves to the target dates, and then they can change their mind whenever they want to, before or after, and have their money go wherever they want it to go.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Can I get a motion then, please?
I motion to transition the township's current 401A and 457 retirement plan provider from Empower to T-Roe Price.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is request to approve the SEMCOG Planning and Assistance Pass Through Grant Agreement and Professional Engineering Services quote that we got from NOAC and Fraus. And to go through this is Director McKee from DPW.
Good evening, everyone. This, before you tonight is, we applied for, with the help of NOAC and Fraus, we applied for a SEMCOG grant for planning assistance for a safety path along Dixie Highway from essentially White Lake Road north to Deer Hill. And we received it, it was great. We've got a $30,000 grant, but there is a 20% match on that, so there is some, a little skin in the game that we have to do with, to pay for our portion of the grant. The grant is going to essentially help us with the design phase of a pathway segment, increase safety and accessibility for pedestrians and cyclists along Dixie Highway, and will promote connectivity to Independence Township's overall pathway system. It provides connections to an existing pathway that continues itself along Dixie Highway. It's an expansion of our system, and it's a lot more accessibility for our residents. As anybody knows, in that section of Dixie Highway, it's not safe to walk on that side of the road. We tried before, and we applied for a grant a few years ago, and were turned down. We did get it this time. One of the major benefits of this is expanding the system in a regional basis, is that connectivity can be had to the Ironbell Trail system. So, just to give you a 10,000-foot view of that, that is a trail system that essentially is being built through state grants from Fell Isle, and it goes all the way to Ironwood, up through the UP, all the way. It's supposed to be a walkway, and there are, it's all in pieces. I mean, there are some big sections that are already completed, but we want to be part of that, or we want to be part of a hub where people can come in, enjoy our community, our safety path, and then get access to that. This will help do that. So, in addition to that, we did ask NOAC and Fraus to give us a quote to do all of this grant planning and reporting for us, because with any federal grant, where this money comes from, there's monthly reporting that needs to be done in what we're doing. And that's the proposal that's also before you tonight for consideration, is for them to administer the grant and the reporting of the grant. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. We do have a township match, and the MAP, as you can see on there, our match is $5,444. Plus, with the proposal that we gave, that we received from NOAC and Fraus, the total cost to the Safety Path Budge will be $19,145. So, nicely, we just didn't get approval from the supervisor to sign the contract for, on behalf of the township.
All right. Questions from the Board? Trustee Tetter?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a quick question. I think this is all great. Love the Ironbell Trail. I know, you know, Orient's done a lot to connect to it and other communities around us, so fantastic. Was just curious, from my own knowledge, I see grant assistance and reporting at $3,800 is part of their 43.7 from NOAC and Fraus. Was that, what was the cost of drawing down or procuring the $30,000 grant from SEMCOG? Because we, did we hire them, or did they do that?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We hired NOAC and Fraus to write the grant.
Yeah.
To draw down the $30,000. What was the cost for them to do that?
It was really minimal, if anything, on that. I'll be honest with you. Jim, I don't have that number in front of me.
Didn't cost us 20 to draw down 30, something like that? Okay.
No, no, it wasn't 20.
I didn't think so, I was just curious.
No, it was just really a grant application that, you know, and I asked them, I said, what does this mean? Because a lot of definitions and things like that.
Right.
Jeff, who's that helped us out with that?
Great, thank you. No, this is, looks great. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board?
I have a comment.
Got it?
I just want to say, from the perspective of the DDA, that this is going to be a big help to us, because we stop, the DDA stops right before this, right, just after this picks up, and we didn't have the ability to pursue our goals and objectives of getting the paved shoulders off and creating safety paths. So, I know that's a project that we're working on, but this, this will take it to the other end of the township, which is not in the DDA. So, it couldn't have come at a better time to plan this in unison with, you know, that. And we're going to be using NOAC and Fraus for the engineering for the southern part of the safety path correction, so perfect timing, and it works out, saves us some money, so good job on that.
Yeah, thank you. This could be a great project, I'd like to see it come to fruition. So, we tried it a couple of years ago for a grant, and we didn't make it. This time, we did.
Any other questions? Comments from the Board? No? How about from the audience? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Any questions or comments from online? Okay, I'll close public comments, and can I get a motion then to approve the SEMCOG Planning and Assistance Pass Through Grant Agreement?
I move to approve the SEMCOG Planning and Assistance Pass Through Grant Agreement with a 20% match of $5,445, as presented, and direct the supervisor to sign the agreement as the authorized representative for the township.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's the motion.
There's part B. Move to accept the quote received from NOAC and Fraus upon it in Michigan for Professional Engineering Services for grant execution and administration of SEMCOG Planning and Assistance Grant for a do-not-exceed amount of $43,700, and direct the supervisor to sign the agreement as the authorized representative of the township.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Motion B passed. All right, thank you, and you might as well stay up there, right? Because my understanding is that the two of you and Treasurer Brown have, are looking to do an alignment between the billing for the first reading of the ordinance amendment for Chapter 48, Utilities, Article 9, Section 48-177.
I just want to, I'll let Paul really get into this, but this is some housekeeping things that we've been trying to get done for a little while, and so, Paul brought it up, and I appreciate him taking the lead on this to clear up some, in our ordinance, the way delinquent utility bills are transferred onto taxes.
So, it's probably self-explanatory, if you read through this, for as long as I can recall, we, when utility bills go delinquent, they were placed on the tax bills when they had been 90 days past due as of September 1st, and then a year, they didn't go on the December tax bill, and then are collected as part of the tax. It was discovered that they're in two different spots in the ordinance. The sewer section indicated it should be put on at six months from September 1st, not 90 days. Well, those bills go together. Last year, when we figured this out, it was, we couldn't split it. Administrative costs of trying to do one partway and one another would have just been impossible, so we did everything at six months last year, just to err on the side of caution, and we couldn't follow both of them, we shouldn't follow the one that gave them the most time. The problem with the six months is that they end up, if they're not paying water and sewer bills, having almost two years, by that, by that extra 90 days, having to use the service before they end up paying for it, not in the next tax bill, but one another year out. And that's just not a feasible way to do that, and so, we're really just cleaning up and making them agree to the 90-day window.
Questions or comments from the Board? No? No? Questions or comments from the audience? No? Questions or comments online? All right, I'll close public comments, and can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the first reading of the amendment to the Independence Township Ordinance Code, Section 48-177. Lean and direct the township clerk to publish said ordinance in accordance with state law, and hereby set the record reading of said ordinance for the next available regular Board of Trustees' meeting.
Second?
Second.
Clerk Newbeck, can I get a roll call, please?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalomothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
And Supervisor File?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you, Paul, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the list is request to adopt a social media and public communication policy. This is being brought forth by our PIO, which is Lauren.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hello. As you mentioned, this is sort of housekeeping on my part. I started just over a year ago. This policy was originally drafted in 2023 by my predecessor, when there were concerns being raised about how the official channels of the township's social media were being used. So, we drafted the policy, redrafted the policy with the help of Nancy from the Kelly firm, just to kind of update it, because things have also changed in the last couple of years. And as Dan mentioned when we spoke last week, this is really just best practice. And as Dan mentioned when we spoke last week, this is really just best practice as for any municipality to have this kind of policy. So I'm willing and welcome to answer any questions that you have.
All right, start with the board. Any questions from the board?
Where is, let me see here. Let me see in front of me. There it is, okay, I've got it here. Yeah, at least ask.
Trustee Tetter?
Oh, thank you. I thought you, sorry about that.
Where you were going?
Yes, thank you. Well, as, as written, or as presented here, again, I like to see the policy language to, to make an affirmative position relative to my concerns, but the first, the first concern I have is, is less about the employees, because the employees are subject to a different standard than elected officials. Ultimately, elected officials answer to the 37,000 residents of Independence Township. So we're not, we're not township employees, if you will. And respectfully to you and your role, who is the arbiter of fairness in this, as I'm reading it, is that correct? Would you, you would be the one to determine what's truth, what's not truth, what's right, what's wrong?
So the supervisor would actually create the moderator position, so I guess by default it would be you, unless you decided to name me the moderator.
Right, and that's, that's the fundamental flaw that I see with this. I mean, absent other, other concerns within, because I, I think this accomplishes everything but the intended goal of increasing transparency. I think it suppresses transparency, and again, I'm speaking through the lens of a township trustee, not through the lens of an employee. They're subject to a different threshold.
Did you see the different wording that was actually laid out for the elected officials, separate from the township employees?
Yeah, I did read through all of that, but, but again, you are, as I understand it, and you know, as Supervisor File has articulated, that township employees are at-will employees that report to him. And so, in essence, you being the arbiter of fairness, directly reporting to the supervisor, who is, like the other six of us, an elected official.
I understand.
So that's, that's, I guess, the biggest, that's concern number one, that I don't think, I don't think it's really possible for someone who reports to a supervisor, who wants, wants to keep their job, to make a tough call, and I'm not suggesting in any way that he is or is not misrepresenting under, you know, under his, his name is here, but, so that's, that's a concern.
Jim, can I just?
Yeah.
Can I just offer some clarification?
Sure.
So the Section 4, for the elected officials, these are merely guiding principles, and if you look actually later in the policy, when it comes to violations and township response, you know, we're really talking about official township social media accounts. So if the elected officials are concerned about their own private or personal Facebook accounts, these are just guiding principles, so there's no, I'm not an arbiter in any way to, to saying what the elected officials can and cannot post. I think if there were a violation in terms of ethics or copyright, that would become a legal matter, if you would look more closely at the policy.
Yeah, and I have, and also distinguished personal versus official. I don't get to go home tonight and take off my township trustee hat, and anything I say or do in this township, I'm 24/7.
Sure.
A representative of the people of this township.
Sure.
So there, I don't believe there is a line of demarcation, and I don't think any policy should or can regulate in that manner. So that was, that was another piece, when we were reading Section 4.
Again, I'll just go back to that these are guiding principles for elected officials.
Right, I guess my, my whole point here is, this should, if you want to have a policy for township employees, that's a completely different conversation for a different night. My view is, I believe there are certainly concerns with respect to suppression of speech and transparency, especially, the number, the number one, you know, is, is you, we turn on the TV any night, and you have contempt for any given elected official on any given night, our recourse is to vote those individuals out, and elections have consequences, our, the way we conduct ourselves, our, our speech, our comments, those all, those all carry with us, whether, once they're made, and so, and I will also say that, again, as a township trustee, I don't believe that what is stated as objective fact on the township website has always been representative in more of a neutral fashion, but maybe in a favorable position relative to the way it played out here in the board meeting, as an example. So again, I, I have a lot of, a lot of concerns with that. I'll, I'll stop there, because I'm sure there may be a couple other comments, but I'll just start and stop there. Thank you.
Anybody else in the board? Trustee Hayward?
Yes, I have, I feel the same as Jim does regarding the elected officials being a part of this policy. With the exception of four, I agree with that, where the, avoiding the appearance of township endorsement by using your logo or something. The township logo shouldn't be used on my personal site, maybe my, whatever site it may be. I agree, the township has control of that logo, and I'm okay with that one part. The rest of it? No, because the problem is, is a lot of it, a lot of it is very subjective, and even getting down, and now I'll look at it as a resident, I guess, of the township, and I, and say, somebody post something to the Facebook page. This is really what we're talking about, I believe.
When you say somebody post something to the Facebook page, who, somebody?
A resident?
And what Facebook page?
Okay, so I'm a resident, and I see a post that was made regarding, and I'll just talk of what I saw, basically, the whole, there was some go back and forth regarding people's feelings about the glitter posts regarding the township hall, right? So I see there was at least 14 comments. I know half of them are missing, you can't see them, so they've been removed, for whatever reason.
Sure, because they were spam and off-topic, which is
Right.
A First Amendment right of the social media moderator.
Yes, I understand that. So, but I look at some other things on here, which again, are subjective, and this is not necessarily what, like, you would post, or what would be posted on the official page. I'm talking about basically responses, like you had mentioned, what, what, things like that. So some of these things listed are discrimination or hate speech. So who's going to determine that?
That would be a legal matter.
Well, hate speech is, is not even, is protected speech, so I'm not sure why that's in here.
Those are, according to the First Amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, these are the only types of comments we are allowed to delete as a limited public forum on social media.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, they're, yeah.
Okay, so who's going to determine what's hate speech?
It's a legal matter, again.
Like, well, can I have an example of what may be removed and what may not be removed?
So typically, hate speech, if it's like trying to incite violence, things like that.
Right, well, that's, yes, I understand that, if it goes towards that, but if I generally get on there and say, I hate an elected official, but...
Sure. Try. Dan Kelly, Township Attorney. So there is a recognized hate speech, as well as discrimination, all right? But to your point on who determines that, obviously, if there is a legal analysis, that we have an example of cases out there, or we can provide an opinion to the township administration on whether or not it crosses the line, we'll do so. But there are going to be gray areas, there's no doubt about it. So at some point, there's got to be a determination whether or not that crosses the line.
There's another thing on here, too, threats, harassment, discriminatory language. I understand most of that, I understand the legal part of that. Vulgar comments, or vulgar content. Who determines what's vulgar? Because what may be vulgar to one person may not be vulgar to somebody else, so who's going to make that decision?
All I can, all I can tell you is, in this policy.
Yeah.
Which is just a policy, it's not, you know, my view of this is, is it legal? And it is legal for the township to adopt a policy where it says as a guideline for elected officials to stay away from vulgar language. Whether or not we can enforce it is...
What's like vulgar comments?
I was talking about, like, somebody commenting regarding on the Facebook page and whatnot.
Okay, sorry.
And I, I just would like to see something more clear than, again, we have profanity, obscene language, who determines what's profanity?
Under this policy, as I understand it, it'd be through the supervisor and/or a designated moderator.
Okay. My question is, is because it's vague, I mean, you know, some people don't like the word "but," they consider that profanity. I mean, it gets based on the level, but if somebody said that, it was removed, or what, that's what I'm saying, it's like, what, what's the threshold there for those? Do we know? Or is it just, again, subjective to whoever's running the Facebook page at that particular time?
So again, this was a, a policy that was drafted by the Kelly firm, and I did a lot of research when I first started, because coming from someone who worked in higher education, I wanted to educate myself on moderating a government Facebook page. And these are the best practices that every single municipality that I researched uses. So because it's a limited public forum, and we want to respect First Amendment rights and the Open Meetings Act, we're not supposed to remove comments.
Right.
Really, unless they go, you know, kind of crazy beyond what is considered acceptable. And I understand what you're saying in terms of it being subjective, but this is the type of language that most municipalities use when it comes to their social media. So I think it's, it's setting up a moderator or the supervisor, whomever's in charge, to know that they have to leave the comments unless they are violating one of these rules. And if you're, if you're looking at me to be the subjective judge of profanity, I have a pretty high threshold, so.
Okay.
If that helps you.
I don't know you that well, so I don't know, you know, I mean, I'm not around the office, I don't hear the office talk or anything, so I have no idea. I'm just curious, like, who determines that? And then going forward, it could be somebody completely different.
Sure.
Say you move on, or whatever.
So for, for example, the comments that you saw that were deleted from the original post that we were referring to, there were duplicate comments that were on a topic completely unrelated to the original post.
Okay. Okay.
And if something like that were to happen, once this policy is potentially adopted, I'm not, I'm not an island, I don't operate in a vacuum, so I think if something came up and I needed to come to the board, I would more, be more than happy to do so.
I'm curious as to why, I guess lastly, I'm curious as to why the elected officials were added to this policy.
Well, for one, the original reason the policy was adopted was because there was an issue with an elected official using Facebook and other social media for political purposes, and it was deemed inappropriate, and that was the reason behind this.
Were they using the township page, or the township Facebook page for that?
Yes, and attempting to use the predecessor, my predecessor, for those purposes.
Okay, all right.
So it's not only protection for the residents, but also the township itself, to maintain, you know, the credibility and things like that.
Yeah, again, I just go back to my concern is, as Jim had, is this even a suggestion to any of us that, you know, we have to limit our, our comments, and is this to just our Facebook page, or are you referring to, I can get on my personal page, and this is how I should, you're expecting me to behave, I guess?
I think what this policy is doing, it's encouraging elected officials to maintain professionalism and their, the code of ethics, and to make sure that if you are trying to represent issues related to the township on a personal social media account, that there is an understanding from the public's perspective, that this is your personal opinion and not representative of the township as a whole.
Well, that's where the difficulty parts, because as representatives of the township, everything we say is basically representation of our opinion, is how we're running, you know, the decisions that we make and everything else, so. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just if I may, just a couple follow-up things. I would, just based upon what I'm hearing, and I, and I, and I believe this, some may have evolved from dissension between full-time, full-time and part-time elected, we all know, can point to that, but I would like to see our township page more nuts-and-bolts information-only, not something that would otherwise be perceived as spin on an issue that wasn't 7-0, or spin in any direction, but board meeting tonight, board meeting next Tuesday, here's the agenda. Join us for Independence Fest next week. Go visit the open house at the fire department. Things like that. Nothing that should, we should not be posting anything that would invite, in my opinion, an ounce of deviation or, or opposition from any of the board members, because that means there is not a consensus on that given topic, and should not be presented as gospel. And I've seen that on the township page, and I know, we don't need to go into the weeds. So I'm, I'm against this, because I feel like this is very, a very directed policy. I also believe, and I, I think I'm the only one here that had the privilege to serve at the State House level, and let me tell you, I, I worked with some real characters, and I'm saying that as politely as possible, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't invite into this community, let alone my home. But yet, the single, the only threshold that limited them was whether or not they're going to get reelected in two years. And so I think that's a really foundationally important thing for us to contemplate, is we're, you, you, whether you want to or not, we shouldn't be having a township employee who reports, reports to one of seven electeds, the arbiter of fairness here. And then if you can't make the decision, we have to call in our attorneys, which, again, respectfully, has been a great township attorney, great firm, they're not constitutionalists in the terms of those that specialize in there. So where, where does the rabbit hole begin? Where does the rabbit hole end? And so, again, I would, I would implore you, as our Chief Information Officer, to really think about those things, because I think that, that whitewashes anything that I don't feel compelled to either agree strongly or, or oppose, I think is a great post for a township Facebook page. And, because that's, that's what it's for. It's for dissemination of information to our residents, not to spin otherwise contentious issues, one way, one way or another. And I would, would also, if I were to even, and tonight certainly would, I know my direction, but would like to see what the other townships present, but again, I don't know that that would necessarily change my mind.
To your point, Trustee Tetter, this policy also acts as a way for the board and the, the township employees, the attorneys in general, to hold the people who are in charge of the social media accountable as well.
And I'm okay with, I mean, again, there's a, there's a real line of demarcation between, between, between an elected official and exempt or non-exempt township employee. It's, it's apples and oranges, and that's why I think bundling, bundling elected officials into what otherwise might be really great, prudent, sound policy for township employees is, that's, that's kind of where I draw the line. Thank you.
I think the reason I included the elected officials is just because I think we do want the same guiding principles for everyone who represents the township, to follow the same sort of ethical conduct.
Yeah, again, look...
I'm just giving my reasoning for why I put it in there.
No, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Trustee Matthew?
I have a comment on that, because that's exactly what I was going to say. All of us at this table had to sign a code of ethics, whether you think of it or not, and there are certain things you cannot do when you're sitting at this table. You're not going to go talk to a resident in vulgar language, or say certain things as you're sitting behind this, whether you're on that side or this side. It's just controlling yourself, and I don't understand, like, if you can't sit in this chair and control yourself with what you say, either out there in this seat, there still is some ethics to how you speak, or what you write, and I have no problem being part of it. And if there is issues, that's why we have an attorney. And there are many other communities that use this. So I don't see a problem.
Okay.
And again, I just want to clarify, you know, we're not talking about your personal Facebook page, where you're posting pictures of your son or daughter's wedding, or baseball game, or photos of your grandchildren. We're not talking about trying to have some sort of guiding principles for how you're acting in that regard, right, online. I think we're talking about if you are discussing official township positions from a personal Facebook page, that it needs to be clarified, again, and this is just a guiding principle, that these are your own views, and not representative of the entire board or the entire township. that these are your own views and not representative of the entire board or the entire township.
May I ask one more question?
Sure. No, and it's relative to, what, what are some of the posts that are inviting language that would be a violation of conduct?
This is proactive, Jim.
Okay. Because, again, I think if we get back to nuts and bolts, this is, this is what's happening in our township, not straying away from the controversial, then it won't be an issue. But, yeah, I'm, and I'm in agreement with trustee Alamothu. I, it's, it behooves each of us to represent ourselves and the township in the best way possible. And again, elections have consequences. Thank you.
Trustee Morocco?
I think my only point I really care to make, because the rest of it's not really, doesn't pertain to me in my opinion. But I don't like the part about that, and the reason that we had a problem with social media was because of a supervisor. I don't, I would not agree to anything that would put the power of who gets to post in the supervisor's hands, because then again, it's just his personal propaganda. It would have to be at least under board control, legal opinion in a closed session. I would never allow one elected official to have censorship over the other six elected officials. That's just way over the line. The rest of it's, you know, I get it. I saw some posts that were, I was surprised that were up that had some abbreviations. I guess there's some abbreviations that I've seen on the township posts that we all know what they mean, that are pretty vulgar. The question is, is that vulgar? Because there, you know, with some, you know.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that individually if you have a concern.
No, I'm just asking how, I don't, I didn't go back to see if those were deleted. And that's a quick problem, when we start deleting, who decides what we delete? But you can say vulgar things with, I don't know what you call it, when you just use the letters, there's a name for it.
An acronym.
An acronym, thank you. That everybody knows what they mean, and those have been being used on the township page, you know, by just random residents that are posting. So, that is a gray area of, you know, what a capital letter means when you put it with a couple other capital letters, you know what I mean? At which point are we going to do that? I get there's a policy, I'm, I'm not going to get into it, doesn't matter. The biggest thing, like I said, I think, is that if there is going to be any sort of censorship, it can't be done by the person running the page, who's also an elected official, who's also in charge of the, the material being put on there, whether it's this supervisor, the next supervisor, five supervisors from now. It's that, to me, seems like there's a better way of, of addressing it than, than that. Because the same concern everyone has, it was being used as a propaganda machine. It can be used to defuse or to drive narratives in the other direction, you know, whether it be positive or, or combating negative. So, that's, that would be my, it's got to be something bigger than one person who's going to put us at risk of a lawsuit during censorship.
I will say that this policy also reflects the responsibilities of said moderator of social media, and that person will be held to these same standards.
I get that, but I'm just, the way this is worded, that the supervisor can restrict the access to an elected official's, you know, access.
Official, official township pages.
Regardless, the official's everybody's page. That's all I'm saying. I don't, I think that needs, that would have to be something that need to be fixed. That's all I got.
Okay, so, two points. One is, for clarification, you were not referring to me as the supervisor when you first started talking, correct?
No, I was not.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear, because a title can be transferred. The second thing I would, I would do is agree with Sam in the sense of the fact that you do not want an elected official being the, the end-all. I mean, I, I don't think that would be appropriate. And even though it's saying me, I would say, no, I would not want that responsibility to say this is this and that is that. Too much of life's experiences is going, are going to put a slant in, and we can't get around that.
Sure.
You know, so I would say that it, it would need to have some sort of, I don't want to say a governing body, but I mean, something more than just an individual to be able to go through and do that. Even if, you know, you and I have had many conversations about, you know, just the facts on that webpage, right? Give it to someone and ask them which slant do you think we're for or against, or something like that?
Sure.
And if, what'd we say? If they come back and say one way or the other, then it's written to bias.
Right.
You know, they got to be like, I don't know, I can't tell. That's the right way to have written, much to what you were saying about just kind of the hard, cold facts and no slant. So, I would say at this point, we probably need to tweak this a little bit. I do agree with trustee now, Matthew, in the sense of the fact that, you know, while I respect the fact that at any point in time, for example, on Monday, I was cutting my grass and two people pulled into my driveway and decided to have a conversation with me, right? So, yes, I'm always has to have the supervisor on. But at the same token, there are times when we make comments that we need to remember that. Or if we want to deviate that, we just need to make sure that, look, this point of view is just my point of view, not representative of some cabal that represents behind the scenes and all that, we've already all negotiated it. It just needs to be clarified that this was a individual's thing. I believe that you can delineate between an individual and a representative. I think of it sometimes when I put my stuff, and I, you know, everybody knows here, I don't really ever go on Facebook or social media. But I do think that, you know, we all need to have that little bit of a thought in there. And if we put the disclaimer in there, I think that just kind of keeps things clean. For the general public, there's not the confusion. You know, is he speaking as a resident? Because we do have had people come up to the podium that are members of committees and so forth, and they've come up and said, this is my opinion as a resident, not as a member of this X, Y, Z committee. So, I think that we can delineate that, and I think that, that actually gives more freedom, I think, to be able to post things. We want to also make sure that I, again, that we're holding ourselves to a higher standard than what the, we would hold the residents. I mean, you know, we are elected, we are supposed to be professional. I would hate to, and I can only imagine, some of those, I've seen some C-span and, you know, that's, you know, C-span's a little bit different than the House. I would like to think the federal government is even a little bit more. But there's some pretty vulgar things that go on there. So, you know, it would just be nice if there's like, hey, this is the thing here, this is what we're trying to hold accountable for, to, so on and so forth. So, I don't think it's bad in that sense. My biggest issue with it just is that I don't want that responsibility. I wouldn't want a future supervisor, because we've had some in the past that could have abused that power.
Can I just interject really quick?
Yep.
Just according to the wording on the policy, it does say that there can be a designate appointed by the supervisor. So, whether it's, it could be not the PIO, not the supervisor, but a completely different person.
There's two things to that. One is that I don't think the supervisor should be in there at all. It opens the door for a, a, a bad decision ultimately being made, I think. So, the supervisor should just be taken out.
Okay.
The other thing we have to kind of weigh it against is going to be the speed, right? Everything happens so fast on the internet, right, and social media. You know, it'd be very difficult to say, okay, we're going to have this committee, and then all of a sudden try to pull off the, the capital W that ends with a capital F, right? So, you know, we probably need to say that there's going to be some policy or some acronyms that we just know automatically, look, these are just non-tolerated. We're not that kind of a community. Have that small community group, whatever that made up yourself, a couple of board members, and say, okay, here's the acronyms that are no-no's, you know, and just say, these ones won't be tolerated. If you use this particular language, it's not going to be tolerated. I don't know where we publish it, because it seems like we're kind of.
In the rules of the page.
So, this is getting into like pretty dicey legal.
No, but you could describe it like, he kind of did.
No, once it starts with this and then with that, we're not going to allow. I mean, I think if you did that, hopefully, that would automatically let it be a little bit more self-governed, right? And there is actually, there are AI bots out there that will comb that stuff and, and clean it up for us automatically. So, you know.
I just, we have to be really careful about First Amendment rights of the residents participating on the limited public forum that is the social media page. And it's a very, as, I'm sure Dan will speak to this, this is an evolving, moving, you know, area of the legal field that we can't really align those types of specifics without maybe putting ourselves up for potential First Amendment right violations.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me, let me just add one little clarification, because I don't think that this policy was designed to address residents' posts on our social media pages. The, the first line of this is guidelines for elected officials and employees. And the comments with regard to elected officials is fair, but this was intended to address those posts by employees, elected officials. So, I hear the supervisor says we want to maybe tweak this. I think of a whole other section that is really direction to whoever the moderator is on how we're going to police and, and enforce this, is what needs to be added to this. Because I didn't view that, and I know that there are comments, posts made on official township social media accounts is in section scope. But the reference in this policy is to elected officials and employees who make those posts, not residents. And I think there's a huge difference between a third-party resident. Yeah.
In the comment section, it's about comment policy, it's section six. It talks about that, responding to any kind of post, I believe, is what we've been kind of discussing, I think. The comment policy, that's comments of somebody responding to a post that was put on the Facebook page.
Okay. I mean, it could be interpreted that way, but the policy in its purpose at the very beginning is designed to address employees, elected officials.
Um, well, you're up there.
Yeah.
If I ask, what, say this was passed and somebody decided they didn't, they didn't care. One of us decided, I don't care what that thing says, I'm going to do what I want.
Right.
What's the consequences for that?
Well, there's no immediate consequence or, you know, a censure by the board of an elected official is about all that can be done. There's always the ability to refer it to the governor for a person's removal. I mean, that's effectively what the enforcement power is. Censure by the full board of a violation of a policy. And if it's significant enough, and there's some stuff in here about violating an Open Meetings Act, confidential communications, those are the kinds of things that would get, at least get the interest of the governor. But ultimately, it's referred to the governor, the governor typically has the attorney general do an investigation if it warrants that. And, and then that would go through the removal process.
So, is that for this policy, it wouldn't be for this policy, it would be for anything illegal? Basically, essentially, like Open Meetings Act? Not like, I got on there and said, I, I can't stand this entire board or whatever, and I name them all and I don't like them, and I'm, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Obviously, we know there's legal ramifications for us discussing something that we talked about privately and things like that. I think we all understand that.
And I agree with that. Now, you're not going to be removed as an elected official based upon the violation of a policy if there isn't some level of illegality and/or seriousness to the violation of the policy. So, there's some subjective gray area there. But obviously, making inappropriate comments in violation of a local policy is not going to be the basis of a removal, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Question?
Trustee Morocco?
Just a couple other points on the rules of the page, you know, when you go there, it says the page rules. Who designed those and who approved those currently?
I think they predated me, didn't they?
Predated me as well.
And do you think that that's something that the board or somebody should, you know, a lot of this stuff, because then, what we're talking, there is the rules to the public who don't have this, you know, who don't have a policy to follow. So, has anyone looked at those recently to update those and kind of put some of our, these comments to, you know, might be something we want, have the rules be very specific, like we talked about with the acronyms or whatever, you know?
Can I speak to that? Sorry.
Sure.
I was going, planning to, if the policy was approved, to let the public know that we are a limited public forum and, you know, the rules were related to the Open Meetings Act and First Amendment rights.
Any more specific than that, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we have a.
You can pick and choose some of these things?
The full disclaimer on the last page of the policy that says this is an official page of the Charter of Township of Independence. It's maintained to share information with residents and the public. We welcome your comments and encourage respectful discussion. And then, basically, you know, your First Amendment rights are protected unless, and then these are, the bullet points are the, the reasons that anyone would have a comment removed. I mean, I've been here over a year and I've, I think I've removed maybe three comments total ever in my tenure here.
Okay. And a second, last point would be the advertising. How do we, how do you handle the advertising? Because there are posts that do name businesses and towns and ones that don't. And at which point are we, is it okay if they're tied to the township somehow? So, then we get to promote a business, like they're doing a joint venture with the senior center? Because that's, you know, that's different than, or when you do a poll of businesses, like who's the best, you know, cheeseburger in town? Like, and you're putting names of businesses, but maybe not every name of every business, you know? Like, how is, how, how you, how fine of a line are we following on that type of? Because we don't want to be accused of, you know, that also, because, hey, they gave us donuts one day and they get a free plug, you know, that, or the other company didn't know that they could have, you know, contributed or did a joint venture with us. And if that is an ability for them to do it, then we need to make that aware or not do it. You know, just, I'm not sure, there's a little gray area on that, so we don't get caught only promoting certain businesses in a town.
So, the, the policy states advertisement or promotion of any privately-owned business, product or commercial service not directly related to township business. So, if we are doing business with that business, then it is okay, it's accepted. So, I know that.
Basically, if they donated or contributed in some way, then, I think that's fair. And I think that's a criteria I've always kind of used when Orr and I were talking.
And that makes sense. My only concern would be is do we give everyone and other people an opportunity to participate equally? So, it's not always the same one, because they might be across the street or we have a better relationship with them. And the guys over on Dixie didn't get a chance to be a contributor, you know, is that like a rotate? You know, just, I just want to be careful that we're, if we're doing that, that it's, that it's rotating or the word is out, or that, you know, if you want to play, you know, participate in things, that we're not only doing.
Can I give you an example?
Sure.
So, we, I've been soliciting local businesses to donate breakfast items when we do our all-staff meetings. And I have called every single breakfast place in Independence Township. I'm starting to go into Waterford, Orient, Auburn Hills to solicit donations. And the only businesses that are being promoted, or not even promoted, but thanked on the Facebook page are those that have donated food items for the all-staff meetings. But I have reached out to mom-and-pop places, local places, chains, you name it. Some places just don't ever get back to me.
That sounds good. I just think you, it'd be wise to have a record of that.
I do.
So, if they ever kind of come back at us. Okay, good. Well, that's, you know, just, it's a slippery slope there if we're not protecting ourselves, you know?
Probably having a disclaimer page wouldn't be a bad thing either, right?
So, I have, I have a question too for you. So, is this, is this, because I read this here, it says advertisement promotion, like you said, privately-owned business, product or commercial service not directly related to township business. So, is this going to change things like, in, like the Sparkle post? Or, you know what I mean? Because it basically says an homage to Taylor Swift's new album, and then National Ice Cream Day, where you have listed different businesses. So, is that something that's going to change in the future?
I mean, that's definitely something that can be addressed if the policy is adopted, absolutely.
Okay. I just wondered, because that's one of the, the lists on here.
Sure.
I thought this was a little, these were kind of in contrary to that. So, I didn't know if this was something that you plan to change in the future or.
I will say too, in regards to the posts that you've mentioned several times in tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Social media also, there is, there are trends. And when you're trying to gain followers to, to be able to transmit information about something as wonderfully exciting as local government, which most residents do not really get super excited about, there are trends, and it is best practice to hop on those trends to, to gain followers and to gain attention. So, I went to that conference, I can, I can show you the research from all of the, all of the sessions that I went to for that. But if you, if you'd like to talk about that, if you have a concern, I'd be happy to meet with you individually.
Sure. Because I, I have thoughts as well, because I think maybe even a better opportunity for us to do that would be promote. But if we get the, I know we only have, what, thirteen hundred followers right now? So, to get the, the Facebook page actually verified and to advertise on there and advertise when we have meetings, so the people in the community know that we're having these meetings. Except for the thirteen hundred people, that we don't know if they still live here, if they're still alive, if they've ever lived here, we don't know. But, so, I would, you know.
Dave, that's a slippery slope, which I'm happy to get into with you.
Sure.
Because the township page has to be directly linked to my personal Facebook page. I don't use Facebook personally.
Right.
So, my personal account cannot be verified. So, that's, that's a whole nother can of worms, but we do have a budget for that.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks.
Trustee now, Matthew, do you have another?
Trustee now Matthew, do you have another? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, really quick, I was just going to point out that it doesn't say, it says in here, however, comments may be removed if they contain these. It doesn't say they will, and not everything is going to be deleted or brought to legal. It's just the ones in question. So, it's just getting people to try and be respectful, which doesn't always happen, I get it, and I think we all have strong stomachs and know what's out there, but I don't want people to think that, because it is one of these, it's automatically deleted, and everything's going to be taken with a grain of salt and looked at appropriately, is how I'm looking at this policy. So, it's just something to live by.
Ms. Clark?
I think I would just suggest that that other person could be, that she bounces ideas off of, or questionable areas, would be someone who posts on other social media pla, spots that we have in the township. So, we have other employees, other departments that post on other pages, such as Parks and Rec, such as John Elke with Independence Television. They may be the more proper person to bounce some of these things off versus the supervisor. I agree that I don't think that the seat can change, as well as your position can change, and I don't, I don't think with that seat being an elected official's position, that that is something that should be the one that answers to your questionable...
Sure.
Things, and giving you direction, lack of direction, which could also be, depending on the person.
Sure. And I do think that's why originally Brittany probably put designate in there, an alternate designate.
That would be my suggestion to remove the supervisor, and possibly another department or employee that posts on social media.
Sure.
Because we have several of those.
All right. Anyone in the audience? Yes, please come up and state your name and your address.
My name's Ann Mancor, 6621 Pearlane at Clarkston. I just wanted to comment, because I run a social media page for my company, or for my nonprofit that I work for, and no, nobody, at least it's not in that, what you guys talked about, nobody talks about what the purpose of your social media account is for. So, if it's strictly for disseminating information, like Mr. Tetter was talking about, like, here are the facts, then you can close off all the comments and, and not worry about it, because that's something we considered for some controversial topics. If you want to make it the purpose as a forum to get feedback from us as your constituents, I think there's better ways to do it. Social media is notorious for spam and trolls, and it's really difficult to monitor, especially because you are a public entity. So, that's just my two cents for doing social media for a nonprofit. That is a great nonprofit, and does a lot of good, but people will find bad in everything, unfortunately now, and, and some of it is strictly bots. So, that's just my two cents.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Just, please.
Linda Bazone, 7925 Foster Road. A couple of concerns on, great discussion, a couple of concerns with the Independence Township's social media and public communications policy. For example, section three scope, it says policy applies to, and it lists personal accounts and personal posts. I, I just think that that's going a little bit too far with any, not so much employees, because I know they're talking about township business, but I'm talking about like trustees or elected officials, because when you list personal accounts, then the whole policy applies to that, and on, and I'm wondering, who's going to police the personal accounts? Who is assigned to monitor the personal social media pages for all employees and elected officials, and, or are you going to target just a select few, just to see what's going on? Section 401 says, are, I'm sorry, are you asking elected employees, or, I'm sorry, section 401, are you asking elected officials to put a disclaimer every time they make a comment about the township, the views expressed are my own, and so on, so on, on their personal media pages? Section four, the State of Michigan policy simply implies all replies should use professional conversational language that encourages comments and engages follow-up conversation. It's just a concern that you've listed on their personal attacks, inflammatory language, harassment, and gives appearance, it gives the appearance that this might be at some point, personal nature, because if the board does not agree with an elected official's point of view. And then on section five, in reference to township's social media pages, it says removal of contact, content. It states the moderator may remove and restrict content deemed inappropriate, and I get, may doesn't mean that they will, but they have the ability to determine what is inappropriate. And according to the Supreme Court, elective officials, social media rules center on link versus free Supreme Court decision, which established that official accounts acting in official capacity or experiencing, or exercising governmental authority trigger First Amendment protections against censorship for the public. According to the Supreme Court, you can delete certain content, you can remove comments that contain vulgar language, personal attack, offensive content, spam, or relevant into the discussion, but it doesn't say inappropriate. So, inappropriate is very loosey-goosey, depending on who is moderating the official township social media accounts. So, need to look at that. And then, even your short disclaimer on section six does not list inappropriate. So, anyway, just a couple of things that I saw when I was reading it, and just thought that I would make you guys aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone online? Nope? Okay, then I'll close public comment, and I guess at this point, we have a motion to move forward? Or do we have a motion period?
I thought you were going to tweak it.
Well, that's what I thought too, but don't we, we have to, it's still on the agenda, so we have to...
Take no action.
If we do nothing, it's...
Okay, no, we take no action on it. And is that go through a normal vote?
No vote.
No vote.
No motion.
No motion, no nothing. Okay. All right, so we'll work on getting it tweaked out. Okay, thank you. All right. You got your hand up? Mm-hmm. I just want to thank Orr and, I, there's a lot in here that, that I didn't know, and, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I think it helps the public understand a little bit, and I look forward to it coming back, and, and then we're, I think the public will like it too, when we dial these, these things in, and I really appreciate the work that went into it. Okay, thank you. All right, closed session, budget session, study session, there isn't anything there. Communication, future agenda items, reports, we have a planning commission June 12, 25, planning commission July 10, 25, Downtown Development Authority Board, June 18, 25, Downtown Development Authority Board, July 16. And at this time, I'd like to bring it back to the board, does any partying board members have any comments? Trustee Tetter?
I'd just like to echo Clerk Newbeck's sentiments and comments earlier. Mr. Larry Rossow was one of my favorite teachers back in the day, and he just had this really great deadpan sense of humor and professed, or at least gave the impression of, of being naive, which he was all but naive, and you learn that as an adult. He'll be greatly missed, had him for international relations and at least one other class. So, again, to his family, our condolences.
So, we're going to share stories, because I had him too for government, and I, I don't know why, but it's always stuck with me, and it's a weird thing, he said that, you know, I was a junior, he said, I don't like sophomores because they're immature, he goes, and I don't like seniors because they think they are a know-it-all. You guys, as juniors, are the easiest ones to teach. And I just, I don't know why, it just always stuck with me 40 years later, but, yeah, he was a great guy. All right, can I... Bill Martin? I just want to thank the board. I think tonight was a good example of how a board can disagree about things and share their comments with each other, and everyone listen respectfully, and ultimately, you know, when the board votes on things, the board made a decision, and, and that decision could be 4-3, it could be 7-0, but it's still the board's decision, until the board votes again if it wants to be changed. And I've always believed that even when I'm on the side of it that I didn't support, I didn't support the action because the board made a decision. And so, it's, I know that's, maybe I'm, maybe I'm living in a, in a fantasy world thinking like that, but that's just how I, I do things. But I think this was a really great meeting, and I appreciate everybody. Okay. Any other comments?
You, your turn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your turn, thank you.